Town Board District 5.
Okay, so with that, we have three items this evening, but our first item is to hear from our school district and to get an update. So Dan, you're gonna be leading off with that, or Tempe?
Yeah, I've got just some information. We thought that would come in and talk to you a little bit about growth and where we're at and construction projects and any questions that you might have. Right now, we are currently at four hundred and sixty-seven new students in net gain this year in the district. So that's over seven percent growth. Typically, when talking with other school districts, you know, there's no hard and fast number, but two percent is usually a pretty healthy growth number. You're seeing the district growing, so you're not cutting positions and budgets and things like that, but it's usually manageable. So this is pretty significant coming from all quarters. So we are very grateful for the taxpayers and for the community support in passing the last bond where we've got a new high school coming online, new facilities here. The question right now is just growth and continued and what is that gonna look like? We know just in the long-term planning and our demographer's been pretty spot on as we've been looking at growth, most likely needing to come back and talk about additional space at our middle school, probably expansion at Severance Middle School and at Windsor Middle School, and then really been looking at needing another elementary school. The question right now is, is it one or is it two? That's probably what's currently being discussed and debated, just because of so many years of rapid growth. Any questions on that portion? I told Shane I'd keep it quick and simple and... And then additionally, just as you've seen, we've got our construction projects all underway. We've seen some really good results. I don't know how many were able to make it to the open house at the Innovation Center, but the new facilities at the high school, as people come back and look, it is, I mean, it's just a different building, a different learning environment. Kids and teachers are very much appreciating that. We're doing some final walkthroughs and getting calibration set on AC and heating right now. The high school, those are the big kinks left. There's a few small punchless items that need to be addressed. And then the pool is currently under construction. I was in a construction meeting this morning. That is on pace and should be open according to schedule, so knock on wood. Hopefully, that'll keep progressing.
And when is that scheduled? When is it gonna open?
In November.
Oh, it's in a couple months.
Yep. Yeah, very much want to thank particularly Parks and Rec for the help this summer, as we've had more kids in a longer summer and making some adjustments there, and then partnering with us for things like keeping the pool open a little bit longer this season so that we could continue having swim and meet some of those. So just thanks, Eric. Much appreciated.
And Severance High School, is that next fall?
It is.
Will be ready?
Yep, and that one, I don't want to jinx it, but is actually a little bit ahead of schedule. All the projects actually are under budget, so on time and under budget has been the standard for just this last round. We feel very fortunate. I don't know if you're able to see, the Greeley Trip did a, the editorial board actually did an article about three weeks ago, just commending the district and the community for the work and for the stewardship, and they've kind of overseen some of that and felt like there's been some good oversight. This time around, we had a bond oversight committee, which the district hasn't used in the past. We just invited citizens and community members to come be part of that to see how is it that that money is being spent and oversee the projects, and we've had a good return on that. So that's been a good, good effort, and we're grateful for those people to come in and just kind of say, hey, here's what we promised and here's what we're fulfilling.
Will that be the group that, should you end at the very end, under budget with some, you know, additional extra money, will they be the one to decide where or how that's utilized, or is it like whatever's next on the to-do list? Do you have like a going, ongoing list then that gets applied there, or what becomes of that?
That's a great question. So we did, previous, we did a very extensive facilities assessment, and I don't know if you remember, but the number actually came out to about two hundred million, but we took that down to about a hundred and eight, and so that's exactly right. We've got our list. We'll start cutting into the secondary in ranking, and that was done by Design Advisory Committee that had staff, parents, and citizens of the community.
Okay.
Already knowing that we were ahead, we've actually hit a few of those items already, and those have been incorporated into the project already, because some of the processes that we went through actually resulted very favorably in what we were able to get done in the construction projects. It's coming together well. Any other questions along that? Then, just talking with Shane and grateful for Chief Klemic and our relationship there, we've seen some outstanding results from the SRO program and having an officer there and building those relationships. It's been fascinating. I've been in the building multiple times, especially at the high school, doing some observations, and Officer Stanger doesn't necessarily know I'm watching him, but I've had many opportunities where I've been in the building for something else, and I've been able to observe how he's interacted with our students and some of the issues he's been able to resolve very quickly. We're grateful for, for him and that effort. Just based on national norms and statistics, we're still pretty lean there with regards to that. Some would advocate that maybe three officers would be more appropriate, but we feel like right now with community support and some of the other things that we've been bringing in as a district, we've provided some additional mental health support to students, and that's picking up some of the slack. But we would like to formally ask the town for another SRO position.
The zip code lends to less issues, but from talking to Officer Stanger and watching and observe how many things he diffuses before they happen, and if he wasn't there, how that escalates into either one of our vice principals or our counseling department having to intervene. So he's been great, you know, he's, I think he's busier than any of us thought would be.
I hope so.
He's semi-average, but no, he does a great job.
Yeah, it's been a real blessing, but it is a much-needed service, and I'd just like to commend Rick for, you know, bringing that up and helping us through that decision-making tree, because it's always kind of intimidating when you're talking public, and why don't we have an officer on campus? Why does somebody need to be armed on campus besides the obvious safety issues? But just all the stuff that he does, the positive peer coaching before kids get in trouble, and the de-escalation before it causes a problem, I think that's paid tenfold. And I don't know what we'd have to do on our staffing if we didn't have him there. I mean, it might take up more than...
Students and parents have talked about the feeling of safety and knowing that he's there, and that's been very big, especially as we continue to see tragedies around the nation. I will speak specifically to the difference between having an SRO and having police that have responded in the past. Talking with, with Chief Klemic, they were pretty much having officers involved every day, all the time, anyway, and so this partnership allows us to help offset some of that cost as, as we've been paying for part of that. Shane and I have been discussing what that might look like in the future. But the efficiency in dealing with something when it would need to go to law enforcement has been huge in helping our administration. The speed with which that's been able to take care of process, have him involved from the very beginning and then see it move forward, and potentially sometimes charges being taken care of. For example, some trespassing issues that we've had from people off-campus that have come onto campus with things that they should not have on campus, and him being able to take care of the situation immediately and get it right into the court system and have it taken care of, versus us trying to do our little kind of investigation, bringing in law enforcement. And the second is, we had a situation a couple of weeks ago where because a student had enough confidence in Officer Stanger, saw him around, was able to come and disclose some information that they knew of, that we were able to, because of that relationship, we were able to proactively take care of the situation before it became much worse. So again, just grateful.
Where would this officer be based at? Where would they go? Elementary school?
We would like to see more at our middle schools and into our elementary schools as well, I mean, and that feeling of safety as well. We're addressing a lot of it through mental health right now, but we are continuing to see a lot more behaviors at elementary levels of just our concerning and certainly in our...
Can you tell, tell me how, what you mean or how your mental health is, how you're offering more support there? Is there somebody now staff there, or is there an office there? Or how, what does that mean?
We've had counseling services in the past through just our typical counselors, but what we've talked about is that they were being asked to perform some mental health services that they're not trained for. It would be like a paramedic asked for a line surgery. And so our, our school board looked at the situation, and they approved an additional staffing. So we have partnered with Front Range, and where we've been partnering with them to bring in a full-time mental health professional that deals with our really most difficult cases. They also do some wraparound care there in that partnership, because we can help these kids during the day, but they go home to that broken environment again, and they come right back, almost worse sometimes than...
Are these kids that are referred, or are they, are they seek out after this kind of service, or is it a combination?
It's both.
Okay.
It's both. Sometimes it's staff, sometimes it's a safe detail, sometimes it is a student seeking out those services, or somebody coming into their guidance counselor that they already have a relationship with, and that guidance counselor saying, you know, this is above what I'm trained to deal with.
Combination of the, the counseling portion that our people are fully trained to have, and then the social work component, and combining the two, where we don't really have, people don't get trained at college to deal with those two components, when really, we would like our counselors to be working with career readiness, you know, where do you place kids outside of college, and where do they want to go to college? I mean, that's kind of the job title, but then it's really been pulled into the social work, the counseling role. They're just not equipped to handle as well as Front Range.
And did I already say it's a, the district pays for this position?
It is, it is, it is in cooperation with...
Cool.
Okay.
With North Range, and then similar to this, that we're, we're paying part of that SRO with officers.
And is that what you're asking from us on the second one? Is another, a similar arrangement?
Another partnership, yes.
Like what we have this, in the first one? Okay.
Where the district picks up part of it and the town picks up part of it, but not asking for you guys to do it on your own. We're also entering into the same thing with the new police department in Severance, so that when the high school is online there, having another officer that would be in that feeder system. And then, again, these needs are just really blossoming and, and what we're needing, and so something that we looked at, you know, with the school board and all of our principals this summer was, safety and security has been part of one of our district directors, but we're thinking it's time to break that out and actually create a safety, security coordinator at the district level that's just overseeing that.
And I, and I just, I don't know what, what the SRO's schedule is. So is he there the entire day, or is he there at the start of the day and comes back at the end of the day, or does it vary depending on?
It's a full-time officer.
So he's there from the start of school to the end of day?
Yeah, and even at times, based on what's going on, he might call for additional officers coming in. So he's been very proactive in getting out and working with the students. It's also helping, because with some of the time he's got available, and that's where we see another officer helping in, he's able to get into our elementary schools and middle schools and begin building that relationship with them early enough. Now, if we could do that even more, because a lot of those threats, you know, it's not you see a kid doing something, it's somebody calls in or a student reports something, and they feel comfortable doing that, and that's how we're able to avoid. We've been able to avoid some pretty big things.
What, I know this is outside the scope of this right here, per se, but what about the charter school? I mean, we can't dismiss them being a Windsor school. I mean, I know that we have a community...
I'll let Shane answer you. Sure, yeah. So we met up with the director last week and asked her that question. They had brought on a part-time security person who's a retired police officer, and she said that she's been very happy with him, and she was actually gonna talk to her board this Thursday about making that a permanent fix for that. So initially, the request from the school was to bring two SROs, one for the charter and one for the rest of the district. And yeah, so I had that confirmed from Becky today, so if her, if her board says, no, we don't like that solution, then the board would see that on the requested budget, it comes in front of you, two officers. But, but right now, I think the plan is just the one based on, well, from either director.
And we had talked, we recognize, it's not like you guys are made of money either, and so we didn't want to come with three officers in one pot. They were originally talking with us on partnering in that SRO, and then how would we divide that out, because there certainly are some big needs there. They are going with this independent, recognize that that does not, it's still gonna put an onus on the police department.
Yeah, we still have more contact there.
Because they're still gonna need to go over there. This guy can help keep them safe, but he's not going to be able to conduct the investigations that would need to be turned over to law enforcement or get them into the system and do some of the things that those officers, so...
It's probably a matter of time before we have the conversation, maybe about on that SRO for the...
Or even with that second officer, how do they help support that security that's taking place over there too? So we have been discussing that on Rebecca, and this change has just been recent. And so thanks to Shane for reaching out.
Sure, yeah, we, we reached out to them to talk about the sports park and just impacts and just, while we had miscreants in the room, we just talked about that SRO as well and in Washington.
What's their total enrollment over there? We hear about your guys' enrollment. We don't always follow with with their...
No, we're including that as a district total. We are now at six hundred and seventy-seven, or six hundred, seven hundred and seventy-one students.
Six thousand.
Six, one of us, yeah. It's been a long way. I've been up since four. Time for bed. Six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one students. Windsor Charter right now is at one thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine students.
Is that included in your sixties under total though?
That is, because we do count them, yep. So district outside of Charter, we're at five thousand, five hundred and twelve students.
So it is almost proportionate to have two, for two SROs covering your district, and then maybe one eventually with their growth, et cetera.
There, and then the officer.
And then the officer, but that would be a partnership between you guys and Severance.
That's great.
What does the SRO do during the summer?
He's assigned back to the set team, and so he performs whatever functions we have during that summertime. He also takes his vacation there, because we don't allow him to take, traditionally allow him to take time. Now, if he had a wedding or something special came up, he'd have to be gone. We'd do that, but he follows a school's calendar, so his vacation time is taken up a lot during the summer.
And thus the proportionate share of salary for the SRO, which is what, sixty-four year, seventy, thirty year?
Well, it's a seventy-town, thirty-school district, right? But that's, that is something that I want to talk to Dan about a little bit. So I started talking to him, and he just taped two third graders to his legs and said, what about the children? So I said that.
It's for the kids.
Kindergarten pop?
Yeah, and unfortunately, one of them was my kid.
I can't believe that.
Any other questions for Dan or Tempe?
Just maybe for the newer board members. I don't know if you went through the election rounds with this. You know, when we talk about capacities, we have a, our grade schools' capacity is six hundred, nine hundred for middle and twelve hundred for high, but we don't build additional facilities until we're twenty-five percent over. So you're looking like seven hundred and twenty-five kids, seven hundred and fifty kids before we do. And range use, I don't know if you have it there, but they're over seven hundred?
They're there.
Already. So it's, you know, we, we just wanted to say, we, we do take, we respond to growth, and you guys do also, but we do try to make, be good stewards. When we talk about election, you have to go beg for, beg for your funding. There are some things coming down the pipe that may help out funding for school districts this year, so it seems optimistic that which may reduce the burden that we have to...
But there are some things that could hurt too.
And there are things that are great for our community, really, so, yeah.
One of the things that we've looked at is with Amendment Seventy-three, if we've read about that. That one would not be enough money to build buildings, but what it would change is, Steph and I have already discussed it, if that were to pass, with the other bonds, you've seen a bond to build the building, and then a mill levy to offset some of the costs of operation, so those new staffing positions that you're gonna need in those buildings. We would anticipate not doing a mill associated with that, it would just be a bond. So it's gonna be very interesting to see how some things develop in the next couple of months. But again, I think some people are confused sometimes and think, well, they're building these buildings like a business, that if we build it, then we can grow our business, and it's, it's the opposite. They're here...
Responding to.
Just like you say, I appreciate the partnerships. I mean, there's tons of them out there, you know, from the swimming pool, which we already showed, tennis courts, Rec's department using the gyms, and just please do listen if there's ever any issues on our part. We want to be good partners, and we want to allow, I mean, they're public buildings. We all paid for them, so they, they should be used appropriately, and you're definitely welcome to them. Thank you for the partnership.
Speaking of, that, that reminds me, so we're spending about twenty thousand dollars right now on a softball field to bring that up to speed so that it'll work better for the Rec Center. So that's been approved, and we're working on that, Eric, if you hadn't gotten that note yet.
If you're gonna have some kind of ribbon-cutting grand opening for the pool, it'd be great to be there for that, considering our partnership for the last few years, whenever that comes up in October, whatever.
Unless going wet, too, in the pool.
In what?
It's dry land stuff. I'm saying everybody in the water.
In the water.
Because nothing says awkward like all of us in our swimming pools.
I said I wanted to be impressed.
You're gonna see me with the camera. All right, there you go.
You know, I don't do anything that is not at least like a bathtub temperature, right?
I have one comment, Shane. I think it might be valuable to meet with the Pooter School District by Thompson as well. There's a new school that's going in Loveland that's gonna serve all, it's gonna be a hundred percent Windsor students in Limerick County, so maybe we could get an update from them and...
What does that mean?
What does that mean?
A hundred percent Windsor students.
Uh, it's gonna serve all the Limerick County's Windsor students going into that. It's being built in Loveland.
Town Windsor, the Pooter students.
Yeah, so, might be interesting to get an update on their new school that they're building for the Windsor students.
Sure. Where's that going?
Thirty and County Road Five.
And their new high school's gonna be about on...
Prospect and County Road Five.
So thank you for your time tonight.
Yeah, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have all our questions, just...
Okay.
Put the hot tub in.
This one just won't leave.
Oh, there.
Okay, shall we break and grab dinner, and then come back, and we'll start on the next item?
I've never felt so cozy with you, Ian. I can't move for a future. I don't. I can't move for a future, I don't.
Both from this body and the staff, that the organization that we currently have isn't really that dynamic. You know, the term that I would use is flat. It just seems like, you know, there's, we have so many departments. And we haven't really taken a critical look to see, is there a better way to serve the public, a better way to structure ourselves? I think, you know, kind of indeed, through the strike commission, last year, the town did an organizational assessment through a Novak study. Where you specifically looked at public works and engineering. And then when Mr. LeBanci was here this last winter, that was one of the tasks that, the task him with is also taking a look at the organization and making recommendations back to the board. So I've read both of those studies a couple of times. I think there's been some big takeaways though, and I think there's been some things that I just, you know, kind of have a different opinion about. But I think the common thread is, is that, you know, I think we do need to take a hard look at our organization and look to do some restructuring. So the first thing I'd point out, and I think it was most obvious to me right when I started, is that, you know, if you said one thing about Windsor right now, you'd say growth. I mean, it's something that's happening, we're sure from the school district. I think at three hundred and seventy plus odd residents per month that we're adding, it's hard to argue that Windsor's not growing at a steadfast pace. And yet, the two departments that we have, they're really focused on growth, or engineering and planning. We're doing all of our development review, kind of all journeys in development, in Windsor start with those two departments. And so I think that they should probably dehouse, that they really should dehouse in the same group. You know, make sure that we get the most efficiencies from neighborhood development applications, make sure that we have a good coordination over these departments and really under one house. So that's the first recommendation I have. The second one is looking at public works and parks. You know, when you look at park sites and culture and public works, maybe from the outside, you know, the parks and culture, they have museums. You know, public works has like sewer distribution, I mean, what do they have in common? There is actually a lot they do. They both have building maintenance, recycling, mowing, snow plowing, you know, they have a lot of things that each department does independently. And they talk, oh geez, you know, should parks be doing this, or should public works? And with snow plowing, well, who, who staff is aware and what equipment? You know, they're just saying that I think we do a lot more efficiently under one group. And I think that the fact that we're, a couple of things with this specifically. One is, I think the timing is really good, we're getting ready to move our park shop out of the public works facility. And secondly, I think that just where we are in the organization, you know, we know that Terry Walker is leaving us sometime and we need to get succession plans. I'm not going to date for him, he's, he's going to leave on his own court.
Is this new news, this news, news flag?
So I, I think it's important, it's really key, you know, there's so many things, especially with distribution, that Terry knows, that we really, nobody else knows. I think it's critical for us to really give this stuff transferred over. And, and I think he could do that a lot more efficiently if he weren't worried about, you know, overseeing the whole apartment, if he had some help coming in.
And actually, it's a flashback, because at one point in his career, parks and rec, I mean, it was under, it was under. So we're actually going back.
Yeah, a little bit back, right, for different reasons. Look at you, right, Mayor. And then the second thing, with parks, you know, I think what I really see the help with park sites and cultures is more that high level planning. One of the reasons that the sports park deal works out so well for the town financially is because we haven't built that four point one million dollar multi-purpose bill. It's not constructed yet, but it was budgeted for this year. The reason why we haven't constructed it is because Eric has been so busy, he hasn't had time to get out the day to do it. So in one way you could say we're actually lucky that we've overworked him. But on the other end, you know, I, and I see this as just being one of the projects that we could have, we should have, based on conversations with the board. We should have more focus on leadership when it comes to developing trails and firing property and doing all these other things. You know, there's, there's a lot under park tracking culture. And, and so I, I think that he and his group and quite frankly, the board and the things we want to do could all help by, by bringing an end as change. And then finally, you know, I mentioned at the beginning, the consolidation is flat. And, and part of that is, you know, we have so many departments, and we have a city clerk department that is two people. We have a HR department that's three people, you know, and these are different director reports. We also have three other divisions that are slightly, I would say orphaned. So you've got customer services, which I heretofore had been under the clerk. When we rehired for clerk, my focus and goal was to just get an awesome clerk. We've gotten Lee Crystal, but I didn't want to try to make, you know, this kind of this position that was clearly developed into a full department head position. And try to hire somebody that was an awesome clerk and to provide that many people over to the department. So we've got customer services, we have communication, and we have IT. IT has been under finance for many years, and, you know, I think it would be nice to get, I'm, I'm sorry, just.
All the shit.
My estimate is typically for permission to crunch.
So you keep it down.
So, so IT has been under finance and, you know, I'm seeing just a little bit of finance and the requests coming in from personnel that finance could use a little bit more help as well. I think one way to give that to them immediately is to just kind of take this off the easy leg. So I should start out by saying that none of these recommendations have, should in any way be reflected on the incumbents of these jobs right now. I think the leadership team is awesome. You know, you have, I think, you know, that we have a group of really dedicated, smart, hardworking people. And it's just that our organizational structure, I think, has outlived its useful life. I'd just give you more of a takeaway, this organizational structure is very similar to what I came from. But the community that I came from was nine thousand people and we were doing like twenty, twenty-five building permits a year, you know. And here it's just the, the amount of work coming at it, some structure I just don't think is set benefited the taxpayers or the organization. So, yes.
Are you ready for questions?
Yes, sir.
Can you talk about how this impacts you having all these direct reports? Is it, I mean, do you feel it's taken away from you actually getting into something or?
Right, and, and so this is where I think it's unfair. At first I think it's unfair to do my direct report. So, you know, if I've got at this time of year when I'm doing a lot of pleasuring things and I'm focused a lot with Dean. You know, I, I meet with Chief quite a bit, I've been meeting with Eric quite a bit over park stuff and, and other folks come in. There's going to be direct reports that I just don't have time to meet with that week. You know, Jen, and, and, I'm sorry, I should start out. Jen Butcher's our new HR director, say hello. So Jen's brand new employee, she's doing awesome work for us, but with all these other direct reports that I have. I'll tell you that I haven't spent as much time with Jen as I would have liked to spend with her. But between development stuff coming up and you jump in with Scott or meeting with Dennis or Terry Anson thing, there's just so many direct reports. It's just, I feel like I'm spread too thin. And so what happens is, well, nothing's on fire this week at public works, Terry's got it handled. So I just don't speak with Terry, you know, I don't really think that's fair to him, he's, he's a town department head, he's got a lot of responsibilities. And I should be able to be more proactive and really sit down with him and see what's going on. And, and so that's part of it, and then I would say on the other end, and I don't know if this has come up yet or not, but I can tell you that in previously, what I would have heard is something along the lines of, geez, you know, one of my department heads wants to meet with manager and he's so busy, I can't get on his calendar for two weeks or three weeks. You know, so it's, it's, you know, kind of on both. And then, you know, when it comes up, obviously, to, you know, supervising knee valves, you know, if there are any issues with people that I supervise, it can get hairy pretty quick, because it's spread pretty thin.
So you can feel like you're not losing control, maybe not maintaining the control you like or the information you like?
Right, I, I just don't think, I, I really look at, at my job and any supervisor's job really in serving a leadership role. Which means that, you know, why I exist is to make sure that, that the chief of police has the resources he needs to be the best chief of police that he can be. Whether that's personnel, or guns, or cars, or computers, or whatever it is, and all the way through. So if, if I'm not there and I'm, and I'm not really listening to what my HR director needs or public works director and engineer, because I'm so busy. I, I just don't feel like I'm doing the job as well as I should be doing or as I want to do. So, so that's the, the spreading thin part of it.
Sam, if I understand this correctly, you're looking for three new people, correct?
Yes.
And probably outside, not promoted from within, but new people.
I, I wouldn't say that. I, I would tell you that every time I've had this conversation with staff, I'm encouraging staff to apply. Someone told me, look, thanks, I'm not interested, I think others may be. So I don't know, I think when we advertise, we'll see if we have internal incumbents that apply for that or if it's outside. But I wouldn't be surprised in the end if there were one or two internal people that were hired for these positions.
But don't you think, I mean, say we did get three outside people. There's going to be a tremendous learning curve there, isn't it, in there? And these guys have so much institutional knowledge that they're going to be spending a lot of time training or getting the new guy up to speed, or lady or whoever. You don't think that's going to be an issue though, huh?
Well, I, I, the reason why I'm proposing that we, that I think that we only get two of these done next year and then one in twenty twenty is because I do think that these are going to be a little bit time intensive, we need to do them right. So I would focus on the community development director, get that going. Even besides, say, on the other end, you know, we know, again, you know, Dennis Wagner is probably not going to celebrate his seventieth anniversary with the town of Windsor. I mean, at some point, he, he's going to go on a back, like ride and say, you know what, this is more fun.
So what are the two that you're going to implement for this year?
For, for, for twenty nineteen, I would do the community development director and then I would do the public services director. The, the only thing that would change that up there is if we had, like, the administrative services side, if we had some turnover, some other things going on and I felt like that elevated it. I would do that ahead of the public services director. But right now, my goal would be community development first, then public services, and then finally administrative services. And, and so anyway, Dr. Jones, back to your question, I think at some point we need to start doing kind of a, a knowledge dump from, from Dennis Wagner as well, you know. So I think that getting somebody in there to work through that, it, it's, it's complicated, there's a lot of stuff, but I don't think there's, you know, the right time to do it was five years ago, you know, probably. And we really started seeing this grow, so I, I wouldn't want it to lay much longer.
To follow up on Dr. Jones, the people you're going to be hiring are at very high level. They should have a lot of knowledge in these fields and then it would just be our processes or.
That, that's right, yeah.
Local information.
I certainly wouldn't, these, these would not be layman level positions. These would be, you know, for example, community development, maybe somebody who's done planning background, engineering background, could be economic development background. And I mean, it could be, you know, all, all of these things could come in or somebody could say, geez, you know, I've, I've kind of, I understand this trade and what's going on. So there is stuff locally, but yeah, that's, that's a good point, thank you. It is, it's, it's a high level position and like I've told staff, if I'm, if I'm interviewing and we don't have it, we don't have the right person. You know, okay, we'll just go back out in three months and try again. I'm, I'm never in a hurry to get the wrong person on the bus.
How does it change your direct report structure?
So there would go, if you go to page.
Have to, have it open now.
Yeah, so I've got on page, page twenty is our, my work chart of twenty-one is, would be a proposed. So you can see that that would leave me with six direct reports. So that would be significantly more manageable.
And my other comment would be, you know, we all talk about the growth we've had. This seems to be something we could grow into, you know, as we go to from thirty thousand to forty thousand and up.
Yeah, you're right, and so I had the question today at the finance, IT staff meeting. You know, right now we're based, it's on growth, we're seeing a lot of growth. Would my mind, we changed it, for example, different state amendments were passed, our revenue dropped. And my answer to them is yes, I think that this organizational structure is superior. I think that this organizational structure better reflects a community of our size. And I, I think it, it addresses a lot of key internal issues with or without the growth and with or without the revenue. It just does it better. And to your point, you know, if you look at some of these organizational charts that are included in here, sometimes what they did is, some organizations have what, two deputy managers? And, and then that deputy manager supervises parks and engineering and public works, well, it's, it's the same thing. You know, they all have kind of, they're, they're kind of all focusing through one person. So I think as, as we continue to grow and, and the organization changes, I think that this is by no means, in my mind, the last time we're going to do this. I think this is something that we do now, we measure to make sure that, that we're getting the results that we want. And, and knowing that in maybe three or five years, that if the organization needs to change again, it's certainly going to be my responsibility and that of everybody else to take another hard look at it and see how that needs to change.
Where did finance fit into the, the new board chart?
So, so their, their, the finance remains a department, so they're just directly, it's still a direct report. So in, in, in some organizations, finances is hopped up under administrative services. But honestly, I just, I'm, I'm somebody who, I just want finance, it's its own special flower. I just, I care so much that, about the books and I really don't want to delegate that out in any form or fashion. So I, what I would do is keep finances a direct report.
I have a question, why, why are we not putting or thinking of economic development under community development? Because a lot of other communities have economic development under, when you have the community development division, economic development is usually associated with that. And because it's such a small department, it's going to be like a very small, I mean, which is why some of these others. I mean, you commented in here kind of why you ended up taking HR and putting it somewhere else under something. And you don't want silos, and I know in talking to Stacy, a lot of times she feels like she needs to talk to engineering and planning. And they all should be in the same room lots of times for the stuff that she's looking at, because it, a lot of times it affects all those departments too.
Well, Mayor, that's an intuitive question. I will tell you that, that that has been the one piece that I've gone back and forth about thirty times at least. The reason why I have elected not to include them there is because when you think about economic development and the on buzzbe role. And that's, you know, say, to really kind of shepherd through developer of business through the organization. I, I, I like having economic development outside, you know, kind of being a little bit more scrappy, kind of challenging the status quo. My fear is if you bring economic development in under community development, now I don't have that common developers' direct report to me. And I just like the on buzzbe role that that kind of development plays. But you're right, it's, I'll tell you, I've been back and forth many times on, on the best contract. And just ended up, I think, in this organization, and especially how I view Stacy's role and the relationship that she and I have. I'm proposing to keep her as a direct report. But in, in a few years, that may merge in a little bit better with community development. But right now, I, I kind of like having her as a little bit more of an outside voice and coming in and advocating.
Anything else? The only other thing that I saw too is when you get back into the job descriptions. Under services director. Because on, on the other two, when you're talking about what you're looking for, you had in there as part of the description, let me see if I can find it here.
So you're, you're in the public services director?
Well, no, I mean, I, you have it under public ser, oh, right here it is. You have it under public service and you have it under customer service, but you don't have it under administrative services. And you don't have a progressively responsible or, and you don't relay it to a specific field. Like the one that you have for what you're recommending for our community development, you're saying they should have planning or engineering. And under public services, you're specifically calling out they should have public works. In administrative services, we don't have that progressively responsible. In Administrative Services, we don't have that progressively responsible piece in here. And we aren't calling out, I think, especially if you're gonna have like IT under that umbrella and Communications under that umbrella, that whoever takes that range, we, I mean, we should call out something specific like we did in those other two categories.
Right. And think for that, Mayor, I would tell you that these were, it's my fault, it's not Jen's fault, but just as we were pulling this all together, I was like, hey, let's start working on these job descriptions to give the board a sample. We sent these out to the different departments, I think, on Thursday or Friday. So I would tell you what you're looking at here is still a draft document where we're not ready to go out with it. I just wanted to give you guys a good sense.
Well, we still have two board members who always do need to get their input. You aren't here for the evening, so I'm not sure that we'll can say 100%, but you're gonna hear each individual, these five board members. But I just noticed that that was missing, you had it in the other two descriptions and that was missing in this one. And I think we need to be uniform in that. If we're gonna have it in the other two, then it should obviously be in the Administrative Services one as well.
Yeah.
I agree. You need to know that. Thank you.
As far as presentations go, say to the board, development, what have you, would these new directors serve as a spokesperson? Would they be calling on the, you know, like the current department heads to make presentations?
Well, that's a good question. I would think that, you know, when we have planning things going in front of the board, just as Scott does now, where sometimes he'll present and sometimes he'll have other staff come and present, I would think it would be similar. I think it's actually really good practice and good to have all staff come in front of the board. I just think that that public speaking is, until you stood up at the podium and looked at the board and know you're on TV, you can experience it until you experience it. So I think it's not only nice for the board to hear from other people and you hear from the same six people all the time, you know, it's nice to see other folks coming in. So to answer your question, I think sometimes it would be those directors presenting to the board. And I would think other times, like, again, if I'm Dean and I have something for IT, I'd probably have a man come and present it because she's the IT person and she knows her stuff so much better than, you know, anybody else can know it. So I would think that it'd be a little bit of both.
Anything else? Can we talk about what you presented in here, at least initially, as a cost analysis? Is that, is that what you're projecting at the highest level? We might be able to, I mean, we may not be, I mean, or, I mean, are you thinking that's the minimum level?
No, I would think that would be the high level, Mayor. So what we do there is we take the pay grade, we take a look at about the 50th percentile, right, Jen? I think it's about 50th percentile.
Right, in the mid, right at the mid-range.
Yeah. So we just kind of, you kind of have a beginning range, a top, and then a mid-range. And so these numbers reflect right at the mid-range. Because normally we hire somebody at that level or maybe a little bit less. Or if you have somebody who comes in who's supremely qualified, maybe you pay them a little bit more than the next person you hire for the other position, you'd get less. So I think this would reflect the higher range. I can't anticipate going really much above that. But again, if you're interviewing somebody and they currently make 125,000 a year and they're supremely qualified, it's, you know, they may not come in at 126, you know? So sometimes these things are negotiations, but I wouldn't anticipate, you know, for the whole of these that would be above those. And again, with the cost analysis, so we basically did Community Development Director, assuming that we hired that position April 1st. That would be if the board approved this in the budget, we started advertising in January, bring somebody on, they give notice to their employer, I think, April 1st is a logical start. Public Services Director, that would be basically having somebody start around September, again.
September of next year?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Is that, I mean, I mean, I think this board and part of our discussions previously and really wanting to dive into and directing folks to really look at the organizational flowchart really stemmed from our concerns with Public Works. So I guess my concern is, is that soon enough? I mean, or, I mean, to help fix some of the problems? Because if we're still losing our folks over there and if we're not adequately providing over there, I mean, I don't know if this position is gonna help fix that. It sounds like it might be one of those things that helps fix that in the interim. But a year from now, I just, I just want to make sure that that's of enough timeliness that we're not waiting too long.
Right. And so this is just my estimate, based on, I do, if we did Community Development Director, I believe that's the most critical for the organization, just based on our growth. So I'd want to do that first. And I'd want to give it, you know, at least a couple months to make sure are things working well, how is this going? I just want to shepherd, to make sure that that transition went well before we start advertising for the Public Services Director and working into that. So I offer these as...
So you're gonna kind of use this because it's a little bit smaller, more manageable, maybe as a guinea pig, so to speak, instead of...
Well, no, I just, I believe that I really bind to the philosophy, it's better to do one thing well than to do two things kind of half, half well. So I prefer to just get in, get Community Development Director, get that settled, make sure that that's working.
So who's gonna, so under that department, though, we're also looking at maybe make contracting with some outsourcing, some groups, where we're down that path. So with those folks, once they're contracted, would they be answering to a Community Development Director?
They would.
And that's still part of the plan, right?
It is. We're actually, the attorney, I think, is working with Scott right now on some contracts. So we have two different firms. We interviewed, we interviewed four?
Four out of a dozen proposals.
And we really, the group really liked two of the organizations and I think they offered something different for different kinds of developments. And so we elected, there's no harm in us contracting with both. We don't have to spend any money with either one of them, but it kind of gave us the opportunity to say, we think with this specific development, this group would be better, or, you know, vice versa. So, yeah, we're underway there.
What kind of services would they provide?
It's a good question. You know, we've looked at doing this two ways. All, one would be I just have the development come through soup to nuts. So it'd be, we've got X, Y, Z development, kind of turn it over to the planning firm and say, okay, you know our code, you know our design parameters, you're our representative. The flip would be, said, okay, we get X, Y, Z proposal, but we know that we've got a land use code to still update, working on sign code, we're working on all of these other things. Are we better off having the staff handle this in-house? We can meet all the timeframes with this and just get this firm to work on these other critical things. So to me, it's, we're still having these discussions and figuring out, you know, in the end, I don't think that our customers care as long as they get a good responsive department, the timelines are made, comments are good. So we're just figuring out, you know, how we can serve the community the best, serve the organization the best, and not really grow the department to hit another recession and then look at, you know, a lot of the planners that we need to lay off.
And that additional outsourcing, I'm assuming that's gonna be somehow represented in the budget. Do we, are we, how are we even coming up with that number since...
Right now, we have $30,000 kind of benchmarking to expand. And I have spoken to at least one developer in town who said that he'd be willing to pay the cost of having his projects go through like that. So we have an offsetting revenue of $15,000. So we thought, you know, this could be something for the board to say, for our Economic Development, we'll go ahead and take the cost of planning services, we're gonna fast-track you. Or we have these services we can offer, you can elect to jump into and pay. And then we still have the ability, I think, as a town, to take some of that that doesn't have a revenue offset and say, we really just need a good sign code, we're tired of waiting on this thing, just get turnover on it.
Good. I like the sound of it.
So, so back to September, is that something that's...
Well, yeah, I mean, you could...
...maybe, I guess.
Yeah, it could be sooner, Mayor. I just, I really, like I said, I really would want to be Community Development Director first, and I want to make sure that that had gone well and was running well before we started advertising for the Public Services Director. Could that be before September? It could, but I wouldn't think we'd beat that pace by a whole lot. So that's kind of my sense on it. But I do get the idea from seeing, again, I think that the reasons that I'm looking at this are the same reasons that the board's concerned about it. I think it is a critical thing to do.
Is there any way that it could be happening concurrent with each other? Considering they're not necessarily affecting different departments, could we do those concurrently for... I think the mayor's concern is just it doesn't start till September of next year and then by then we're in the budget season for the next year and however that might play out, I guess.
Right. I would prefer not to do them concurrently. I really would. But hearing the board's thoughts, I mean, I hear you, I could definitely try to, you know, if this looks like something that's gonna be in the budget, we can start advertising actually for Community Development Director in December after the budget's been approved because we wouldn't be hiring until January. So we could certainly start fast-tracking this a little bit more. I mean, if you guys are ready to get going, I'm certainly ready to get going on this as well. So we could do that and fast-track that and try to make it cool to get a Public Services Director going a lot quicker as well.
I mean, I don't want to rush things just to get it done. I believe that we need to do a quality job of what we're doing as well. But at the same time, I know that that department has been like our number one concern, even more than, you know, the Engineering and Planning. And so that's why I'm just a little bit concerned that we're, again, putting them off now another whole year when we, I think this board has kind of, I think, made a strong effort and to the Public Works folks to let them know that we are trying to, we are working on something to help make some changes and so I just want to make sure.
Well, and that, that specific directorship would be a little bit more tricky to find the perfect qualified because it's dealing with Public Works and Parks, I mean, you know, same but different. And what if it does take six months to find the right, you know, I don't know, but it may be... I'm not trying to speak for anything. I'm just trying to say, you know, we don't even begin that till the middle of the year or something like that. What if we then run into that?
Okay. I'll tell you what, you two are on the record. I've heard you, I know what you want. I will, I will.
I was just trying to give you time to eat, but...
Appreciate it.
And I hear you on the Economic Development, keeping that a standalone? And I don't disagree with what you said there, but how are we going to, as we move forward, prevent that from being siloed to the other two key departments that kind of tie into that, which is, you know, Planning and Engineering, so that all three of them are tied in with each other on things? And don't, you know, so one department isn't caught off guard when something else is happening? I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to show here, but then how, within how, just internally, I think that's to be said. But I would still hope that you find a way that those three somehow can integrate or have some kind of communication structure. Because I don't know what really the problem is, other than I've heard that there sometimes has been some issues. And so I don't, I don't know how to say how to fix it, other than I hope that, you know, that all three of them can work better and more proactively than behind this, you know? So everybody knows when something's coming, instead of somebody learning about something after the fact.
Right. And I would definitely put that charge on Community Development Director. Is, you know, like I said, I think the background, Economic Development could be a background that could come, that could bring in. So I think...
So that person will be the outreach to them, to bring them into it. He or she learns that Planning is about to see something, that person has to have the knowledge to know how it might affect her department, that he or she would relay that to them or make sure that Stacy's in on those meetings or whatever.
That's right.
Okay.
Well, right now, we get, in our weekly report, don't we get reports from, I know, Scott, Dennis, Engineering? And Economic Development's included in that when this new proposal comes along, right? Isn't that correct?
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about?
I know the weekly...
I forgot, there's a name for it, but...
The Development Review Committee?
The Development Review Committee.
Yeah, that, they meet every Thursday morning with applicants, distribute projects, and Economic Development is involved.
Is included in that.
And maybe that's something new that you guys have implemented and that's been helping. I don't know. Hasn't been waiting for a while? Okay.
So Stacy and/or Jill are in those Thursday morning meetings. So they're, they're there when we're meeting with applicants, they're there when we're distributing applications for the first time for reviews, so.
Okay.
And they have input in those meetings.
And we'd see that probably continuing, I don't know, set up...
Right, yeah. Yeah, so this is, I think we have a lot of systems and things in place that work right now. You know, I like a lot of the systems that these guys have built up, everybody in the room can talk. And the mayor brought it up earlier, you know, I think that most issues that I've observed have been, a lot of these communication things, you know, it's not, it's not that the intent is wrong or people are really on a different page. It just seems like we're not really speaking to each other that well, maybe talking past each other. So this is really just, you know, really to kind of bring that focus in, make sure that communication's happening better. And I think the Development Review is a good example, one of getting everybody in the room and talking about stuff.
Is our software working the way we thought it was gonna work? Remember when we...
Yeah, the E-Track, the E-Track Development Review Software, the portal that the development community can upload their plans for review.
Because I was supposed to also, though, make sure that all the departments could always be in the queue at any one time, right? Like where a project was and what the status was and why it was redlined or what, who answered what, but...
It's, I would say it's like...
Great in A to F.
Like most software systems.
I have a feeling it is not an A.
It's not an A, but I would say that you would get the same answer from just about every development department in the region. Every software package is oversold and underperforms and it's not nearly as flexible as we were told. But it is working from a tracking standpoint, from a Development Review standpoint, from a reporting standpoint, being able to, you know, somebody wants to know how much time is spent in staff's court versus the developers' court, those kind of things. Everybody's got access to it, including Stacy's team. But yeah, it's just not as intuitive and not as customizable as we would like. You know, when they came in, oh, yeah, it can do this and that and the other thing. And it's so easy that Shane will be able to get in there and not have to even go in.
Look, you called something dumb, I'm gonna prove it to you.
What's our software called again?
E-Track it.
E-Track it, okay.
But what I, what I was meaning is that someone who's not in it all the time can just get right into it, it's intuitive to find something, it's not, it's cumbersome. And so the Development Reviewers in Planning and Engineering and Economic Development can get what they need out of it, but it's just not as user-friendly as we had hoped.
They analyze them with government software, that's how it is, because we're so few local governments that they need this stuff and it turns out to be fairly proprietary. You know, if you have Microsoft and you have millions of people on it, they can be fairly customizable. When you get these and they've got 200 customers nationwide, it's really hard to drive change and make it work, so.
And it's really similar to the whole conversation we've had about, you know, Safe Built is a contract inspection agency and they do a great job for us. And we're trying to work through having a similar situation with a planning consultant that can do similar contract work for us. But you've got an international building code that's consistent around the world and there isn't an international municipal code. So every code is so different, even between here and Fort Collins, that there's a lot of customization to the inspection review process. And so when those software companies try to replicate everybody's process, it doesn't always work as easily as building code, which is universal.
Any other questions?
Okay. Well, I appreciate everybody's time and comments. I guess, unless I hear otherwise, these three positions, as well as a few others, will be included for your consideration for the 2019 budget. So you'll get a chance to see them one more time and then...
When you say a few others, what does that mean? As we go budget by budget, we're gonna hear some others? Or there's three other, I mean, there's others to these other three?
No. So there've been other positions requested by other departments.
Right, which we're gonna hear when we go on these one-on-one meetings, is that...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So you'll hear it twice. So on the first night, Dean and I will give the board an overview, we'll give you an overview of... We'll give you an overview of all the funds, where we sit. And we'll also give you an overview of the personnel requested, so you can see, put it on your face, okay, this is how many we're gonna see. And then, is different people come in to talk to the Board? For example, like, when Chief comes in, we'll dive down a little bit more and talk to you about what personnel he's requesting. So, I feel strongly that instead of me presenting what people want, I think the Board should hear directly from the department heads and their needs. You know, it's something that came up during the strategic plan, as far as the Board, you know, wanting to know really what's going on in the organization. And so, we've got a lot of bright, engaged people who know their departments well, and I think you ought to hear from them, why they've requested what they've requested. Certainly, I'll stand accountable for, if I'm recommending less than they've asked for, and I'll at least advise the Board why I think that that's impossible, but... So, yeah, you'll hear it twice, the overview, and then when they come in.
Okay, but these are your only, your only recommendations to us at this time, that you're recommending?
That's right, there's actually a fourth, and that's gonna be some administrative help for Town Hall. And it's, you know, what I envision is somebody who'd be able to help planning a building, well, planning and engineering, and finance, in my office. We have a lot of department heads that are like, for example, you can get your credit card bill every month, and they're going through and spending, you know, three or four hours just with balancing the bills. It's like, my God, why would we have them doing that? Let's just get a little administrative help. So, I am asking for an administrative assistant that would be housed in my office, primarily because I'm one of the few offices that actually has an empty desk. But I envision it as being a town-wide resource. You're saying even for the attorney, you know, I mean, we're sending out these mailings, and he is, you know, writing the letter, and then he's like, you know, affixing stamps to it...
Making the envelope.
Yeah, right, I mean, like, literally, I was up there, I think it's the DEA, and he's getting 20 letters going out. He doesn't have any administrative help. So, I think that, I've heard a lot of that, you know, I've heard that from Public Works, I've heard that from Parks, I've heard that from the police. I think the entire city organization lacks from administrative help. So, you guys are gonna hear that even a few times during the budget, but once for me as well. Four meeting in 15 minutes.
Anything else before we go into future Town Board meetings? Okay?
So, there's just been one change since we spoke at the last meeting. I believe that Paul had requested that we start at 5:00 PM on a couple nights. So I did meet with Dean today, we looked at the schedule. And so, on October 8th and the 22nd, we're gonna schedule those to meet at 5:00 PM on both nights.
What means?
Oh, so, in our...
Actually, it's not updated there, I haven't had a chance to meet with Finance yet. So, Dean and I did meet today and looked at the schedule, and so we will start. And we'll update that for the next meeting, Mayor. But October 8th, we were scheduled to start at 5:30, that'll start at 5:00. And then October 22nd, I think it says 6:00 PM on the schedule, and that'll be at 5:00 PM as well.
Thanks for giving us two hours.
That's right. Yeah, so now we have eight hours of programming to meet. And then on the other two nights, on the 1st and the 15th, there's really no any time to that. We're programming for two hours, but because we don't have the Board meeting that night, and because we have Parks scheduled, I mean, we know Eric's not gonna keep it to two hours, right? We feel pretty good about that. So...
He wants all eight.
Yeah, so, so, yeah.
We're gonna cut him off after 60 minutes.
Let's say it to Mayor, he better look out.
So, so anyway, we had the...
Advance notice, Eric.
We had an hour program. I did look at your last, when you did that full-day Saturday, and it was 7:30 to 1:30. Or, 7:30 to 12:30? 12:30 or 1:30?
1:30.
1:30.
We probably went longer, but...
Yeah, usually, sometimes.
So, but that was, that was, but that was six, that was six hours, that was scheduled, though.
Right.
So again, we've got eight hours programmed, and then the ability on two of the nights to go, as long as we need to. So, again, I'm hoping you guys can trust in me and see that you're gonna have plenty of time to go through the budget, it's gonna be a lot more qualitative. And in the end, you're gonna all be so thankful that we kind of skipped the Saturday.
And then the 29th is, as we, we'll decide as we get closer to the end of the month, we're gonna do it.
That, that's right. So I think that we'll have Dean and I talk today, and that's the reason why it's not updated in here, 'cause I wanted to be able to go through it with him more qualitatively. But I think at that meeting on the 22nd, we're going to program, program in about a 30-minute recap of the capital improvement plan as well. So, we'll kind of briefly go over it on the first meeting. But we wanted to put in some time to kind of recap both on, you know, anything that's changed for the Board, so you can just kind of get an update on where that, that cap plan is. And then, so after all of that, if you still feel like, jeez, we wanna sit down on the 29th, we can meet. If you, if you decide, jeez, we've got it, we're budgeted to death, and we don't need to meet again, we're fine taking that Monday off as well.
Right, but I, but I want the Board to, to know that it really is at whatever comfort level that we are at. We can continue to have discussions, you know, until we are, you know, satisfied, or until, you know, you feel comfortable with what has been presented and what you wanna approve. So, even if we have to have additional couple meetings in November, or, I mean, it doesn't, I don't think per our Charter, we have to approve the budget, do we, by November 24th? I mean, we typically have, or, I mean, that last meeting in November, but if we had to, for some reason, do it in December, there isn't something that says, you can't carry it over. I mean, it's not ideal, I don't think, but if, for whatever reason, I think that we have. But I think we have ample time, is what I'm trying to let you know. Then I don't want anybody to feel like we're rushed, or you have to make a decision just because of a calendar. I mean, we're creating a calendar, so we have a guiding document, so we finally get to an end somewhere. But we have opportunity to have other conversation, if, and how, when, and how it's needed.
Absolutely, Mayor, and my colleague Steve's statute says we need to adopt the budget by December 15th. That's the only overriding law that I'm aware of, unless the Charter has something differently, so...
Yeah, I think it's before the end of the year, but then you figure you need time to get it to...
Right, and I think statute says December 15th.
Okay, that says that we have to have the mill levy to the, to the county treasurers by December 15th.
So, yeah, and, so we don't have anything else programmed in November, so we could certainly, you know, again, if there's a couple of you that are gonna be gone on the 29th, and you still wanna meet and be a part of that, we can just hunt to November 19th or something and just go meet, so...
Okay, and we don't have, both of these additional events that are currently on the calendar are questionable. I mean, we know we don't have any meeting at this point with Weld County. They can't seem to get a date that will stick, so... And we don't know about this civic data resource.
No.
I don't think you, I think in your memory, you haven't found anything about that.
That's right.
So there aren't any additional events that I'm aware of coming up for any of us.
Just you mentioned the high school thing beforehand.
Yeah, that's a new thing that you just told me tonight.
Yeah, if, if anybody missed the high school tour, there's another one this Wednesday at 4:00, if you weren't here for that.
And so, should we, Crystal, can we post that, just in case we have...
Oh.
We'll just post it, and then if enough of you show up, we'll plan with the law. And if you don't, we just waste you a piece of paper.
Okay, and we've got a few minutes before we have to...
Fantastic.
My next...
Thank you, guys.
So, did you guys, so, there's this memo...